We will call the meeting to order if we could. The Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2018-26, November 20, 2018. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
My Father.
Lord, heaven, how will you not make that a kingdom come? That will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And we shall see our trespasses, as we see their failures against us. And we shall not intend to eat but to worship the people of the highest heaven, the power and glory forever. Let me give this due the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under the God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you to remain standing, please. We do have, if you don't mind, bear with us, if we could have a moment of silence for Aaron Hudson, the 27-year veteran of the Salisbury Police Department, more popularly known as Bull. He passed away last night. We could, please, have a moment of silence in honor of Bull Hudson. Could entertain a motion from council to approve legislative minutes from November 6, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from October 2, Conley Mill Road.
Remove.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from October 2 in reference to the proposed animal ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from October 16 in reference to Pirate's Wharf.
Remove.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from October 16 in reference to the drainage tax statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from October 30, 2018, in reference to traffic signs.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Ms. Hurley, you have any announcements before we go to the proclamation?
I do, actually. Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We do have a couple of changes to our agenda this morning. The first change to today's agenda is the discussion on the veto of Legislative Bill 2018-09 and Charter provision for council's reconsideration. Section 411D has been taken off the agenda. The county executive sent a letter stating that he is not approving the Legislative Bill 2018-09 for the public, that is, the animal ordinance, and he provided his reasons why. So the letter was originally thought to be an executive veto. The Director of Administration, however, has informed me that the county executive is not vetoing that bill. And since the executive is not vetoing the bill nor approving the bill per Charter Section 411(c), no council action is required. The legislative bill will become law today, and will go into effect on January 19, 2019. The other item that I wanted to mention is the resolution for the land acquisition. On the Potts property is not on the agenda this morning. The county executive has indicated that he intends to withdraw his request to purchase that land, so we will not be moving forward at this time. I don't have anything formally in writing yet, but that is the intention as of today. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. We also have proclamation. It is National Adoption Month, and we have a proclamation. Danielle Brennan, I believe, and Jamie Truitt, are you here today?
Yes.
There you are, right in front of me.
Patrick Smith.
Patrick Smith.
Yes.
Hi, Danielle. Pleasure to meet you. It is National Adoption Month, and for that we have a proclamation that I would like to read. If you can find where I put the glasses. I got them here, thanks. Whereas November is recognized as National Adoption Month in an effort to spread awareness, encourage others to learn about adoption, and acknowledge those whose lives have been impacted by adoption. And whereas National Adoption Month celebrates families who have grown through adoption and recognizes the many children still waiting for forever families, and whereas all children need love, support, security, and deserve a place to call home. And during National Adoption Month, we celebrate the acts of compassion and love that unite children with adoptive families. And whereas more than 100,000 children in the United States are awaiting adoption, and National Adoption Month is a time to recognize the essential task of providing all children with the comfort and safety of a permanent home, now therefore be it resolved by the Wycomico County Council that November 2018 be and is hereby proclaimed National Adoption Month on this 20th day of November 2018. You can applaud. Be free to make comments.
Thank you. Council President, council, ladies and gentlemen of the community, my name is Patrick Smith, and I work for the Department of Social Services here in Wycomico County. I am the foster care and adoption recruiter and trainer, and I just wanted to take a minute and give you a little bit of statistics. Currently nationwide, there are approximately 400,000 children that are in the foster care system. Of those 400,000, 100,000 approximately are waiting for permanent homes. As far as the state of Maryland, the latest numbers that we have, which are May of this year, we have around 4,800 children in foster care, and of those we have 231 that are free for adoption. Locally, we have around 30 children that are in foster care, that are in the foster care system. And of those 30 families, or 30 children, we have around about 10 that are having to be placed outside of the county. Most of those are due to the need for therapeutic care, the level of care that is above what a normal family would be able to take care of. So the need for foster families and families that are interested in adoption are definitely needed. If anyone is interested, the easiest way to get information is either contact me through the local department, or you can go on adoptuskids.org, and then go to Maryland, and then you can get the information for your local county. Or you can go on Facebook. Facebook, we have Respite, Respite Adopt, or I'm sorry, Respite Foster Adopt, and you can find our webpage, or our Facebook page. Also, the local Lower Shore Adoption Network is another very helpful support network that we have for adopted families here. And as we know, they need as much support as we can provide for them. At this moment, I'd like to introduce Danielle Brennan. She is the Foster Care and Adoption Coordinator for Wycomico County.
Good morning. I just wanted to recognize our Adopt a Family of the Year for 2017 and 2018. It is a nomination that the local department, every local department across the state does every year. Sheila and David Edwards were nominated as our 2017 Adopt a Family of the Year for their commitment to three siblings that were placed in care. These children have flourished with the Edwards family and are overcoming developmental delays and health concerns they had at birth. Mr. and Mrs. Edwards spent four years fostering these children before finalizing their adoptions last year, making their family of five grow to eight. Our 2018 Adopt a Family of the Year nominee was Natasha Mann. Ms. Mann has accepted the placement of several foster youth into her home over the last two years that have included children with significant mental health needs, intellectual disabilities, a victim of human sex trafficking, and an LGBTQ youth. Ms. Mann has devoted herself to caring for these children while in her home and has demonstrated an acceptance for whatever uniqueness these youth have presented into her home. And so we just wanted to formally recognize these families.
Appreciate you being here. Good morning, Ms. Taylor.
Good morning. I have two items this morning that will be split on the agenda, and the first item is public hearing on Legislative Bill 2018-05, Amendment Number One, which is an act to amend and transfer the appropriation from use of prior year funds account to the transfer to other account in the amount of $254,758.15 in the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. This bill was introduced on October 30 by the President of the Council at the request of the county executive, and the purpose is to generate funds to pay matching grant funds for the Pirate's Wharf project, and it's on for public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. This time we open the floor for public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2018-05, Amendment Number One. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, please come to the podium, please, and state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ray Thompson. I'm a member of Preservation Trust Wycomico, which is a local arm of the Maryland Historical Trust, and in our role as watchdog organization of the area, we have for some time been watching the Pirate's Wharf site. Neither Preservation Trust nor Maryland Historical Trust has any objection to the county's efforts to develop the park with the understanding that there would be a limited development of the site retaining much of the property as open space. Given the property's environmental setting on the Wycomico River and its historic nature, it offers a wide array of educational, historic, recreational, and environmental opportunities. Therefore, I would urge the council to accept the grant funding which has been made available for the proposed project at Pirate's Wharf and to match that funding to make this park become a reality for the citizens of Wycomico County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Judith Stripling. I'm the Chair of the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, and I'm also a member of the Pirate's Wharf Task Force Committee, and I'm just here to support this appropriation. I, as Mr. Thompson indicated, the development of the plan for the property is a limited development with emphasis on education and conservation of the natural resources, and our committee, both committees strongly support that and have worked hard to see this become a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2018-05. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Hurley?
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Shawna Kersley, Director of Corporate and Community Relations, Ward Museum, Wildfowl Art.
If you'd like, you can, do you want to present here?
Do you mind if I stand?
However, whatever you.
Do you need to use the laptop?
Whichever you prefer.
Yeah, can you just hit that point, that presentation on there?
Sure.
Try not to break any time.
Yeah.
Is it Kersley or Kersley?
Kersley.
Kersley.
Hi. So good to see you guys.
See you.
Are you ready to play?
Ah, yes.
I was the oldest, Lynn was the youngest. They were both barbers in the town of Chrisfield, Maryland.
And in between haircuts would carve decoys, and over time, the barber shop kind of ceased, and the carving became an international sensation.
Well, the Ward Foundation began in 1968 primarily from a group of men who were interested in recognizing the Ward brothers.
The Ward Museum pairs the very best of the eastern shore with high culture.
The opportunities for young people to begin to appreciate what we have right here where we live.
Residents, families, and young children, as well as the Salisbury University students, tourists, and visitors to this region can directly or indirectly have an impact in the future, especially as pertains to the preservation policies and protection of this environment.
When the museum was accredited in 2001, it showed that we had met and exceeded the standards of the museum field by the accrediting agency, but also showed the community that we really did have something special here.
It's nice to know how special it is, but it's great to be told by the world that, yes, that is a special institution.
The city of Salisbury is the only community of its size in the country to have an accredited museum and an accredited zoo, and it shows the folks around here that they really do have a high standard of what they expect from their cultural institutions.
There are numerous educational programs for diverse audiences here at the Ward Museum.
Our relationship with Salisbury University has really been one of the lasting achievements in our organizational history. It's helped us deepen and extend our educational connections throughout the community and campus and improved the overall quality of everything we do here at the Ward Museum.
Probably the thing that impresses me most, or has impressed me most about the Ward, is the breadth and depth of its educational programs.
I believe the hands-on approach that the museum offers provides an applied learning.
Yeah, ever since I was a kid, I remember the Ward Museum showing up in our schools. So touching the lives of 23,000 individuals in Wycomico County is powerful and special, and not too many institutions can say that. But the Ward Museum touched my life, and I know that it is touching the lives of many kids every single day in our school system.
The ongoing opportunities and programs that are presented here is just stunning.
The museum itself provides a historical record of the people, the culture, and the traditions, as well as the changing habitat that you see here on the eastern shore. These learning centers are critical for the understanding of who we are, where we came from, and what we may need to do in order to continue our existence into the future.
Now, they're preserved. They are put together so that it could be utilized as we go forward in the next 50
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Wow, so thank you for having me, Council President. Welcome back to the job, guys. Election's over, right? This is exciting.
Thank you.
So I have two questions for you guys, and you can hit us one more. How many of you have been to the Ward Museum within the last year? Okay, all right. How many of you have kids that have been to the Ward Museum, or grandchildren?
Can you speak into the microphone because our recorder won't pick it up otherwise?
Okay, okay, wonderful. So my name is Shawna Kersley. I am the Director of Corporate and Community Relations at the Ward Museum of Wildfowl Art, Salisbury University. And one of the things that I like to say is, we're not just about the ducks, people. Okay? So a lot of folks tend to ask me, ah, you know, are you taxidermy? Are you all about the ducks? We're not just about the ducks. One of the challenges that we're having at the Ward Museum is, as I go around and I tell this story, and it happens to be a story that I'm well-connected with, and it's one that I love, and they said, well, you know, those ducks, and the old guys, and the birds, and the birds cost a lot of money. How do you plan on taking this wildfowl thing, as it's often called, into the world of Fortnite, YouTube-ing, and all of this good stuff, right? We do that through education. Last year, we serviced 23,000 in education, and we have a very small education team. We're small, we're mighty, we work approximately on an average 60 hours per week. Education is exactly how we do that. We have a lot of drop-in art programs, we have the little totters come in every Wednesday, we have e-burding. We really have a huge concentration on the kids, and a lot of our programs are free to our community. So as the corporate, the Director of Corporate and Community Relations, what happens is I partner with our corporations within our county and essentially convince them that aligning yourself with a philanthropic brand is a good thing to do, and that money goes into providing these free services that are accessible to our community. So here's something really, really neat that's going on at the Ward Museum right now. We all talk about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, which is the common core for our school systems. Well, we are now a part of a pilot program, and it is called STREAM. So it's science, technology, research, environment, art, engineering, and math. So the Ward Museum is now the REA, Research, Environment, and Art, within the core curriculum, which is STEM. And what that does, and I see a lot of you are kind of looking because you kind of see how this thing is rewiring the brain a little bit differently, we have a test program, and we received a $1 million grant over five years. It's not a lot of money. We just thought that this program was way too important for us not to do. And so we, our test market are four Title I schools here in Wycomico County. So we've gone through our first STREAM program, and here's what's happening, because I think I have a time clock going on. So here's what's happening, and we're monitoring the data very closely. We're noticing that within this population of Title I schools, and we'll call them, they're the poor kids, you know, free reduced meals, what we're noticing is the test scores are going up. The kids are sitting still. They're taking more responsibility of their physical selves, they're learning about the environment, they're learning how to be more independent in their thought, and they're also learning how to drive their education process, becoming stewards of their education process. So we have partnered with the Wycomico Public Schools. The data is absolutely phenomenal. These are the things that we're looking to have you guys help us support. We have seven departments in our museum, so we're also doing a lot of events. As you've seen, this is our 50th year, which is an incredible milestone, and we're always asking for the community's support. How can you support the Ward Museum? We can all write a check, right? But that's not the best way to support the museum. You can visit. You can like us on Facebook. You can say something nice about us. You can give me a call and say, hey, my family would like to come down, can I have some VIP passes? So we work a lot with the community. The other thing that we do very, very well is we play nice in the sandbox, because I love sandboxes and I like friends. So the community part of what we do is partnering with our other community nonprofits and organizations that are doing compatible things, like the people that were here talking about adoption. You know, when I leave here, I want to call them. I'd love to have those foster kids to come in and experience what we do, or we go to them and have them experience what we do. So we, you know, one of the things that I've learned through my career, I think it was about maybe four years ago, Larry Hogan said to me, you know what, Shawna, cross collaboration is going to be your fastest way to get to your community's success. So that one hit me really hard, and I practice that every day. So if I think the shorebirds are here, you guys are community partners of ours, thank you very much. We have a lot of nonprofits in town, Horizon, so we celebrate because together we're much stronger, we break the silos down, and we invite you to visit us at the Ward Museum and support our work. In fact, we're having a fantastic party of the year on December 13, 5 to 7 p.m. It is a business networking after hours, and you're all invited to come, and you can find me at the Ward Museum. Check us out on Facebook or give us a call. Thank you very much for having us. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Kersley. Ms. Kersley, you'd like to know, I was in South Carolina this weekend, and I ran into a gentleman there, and of course, you always ask somebody where you're from, et cetera. So I told him I'm from the eastern shore of Maryland, and then you always try to pick out a landmark they might associate with, and so I was getting ready to tell him it was near Ocean City, and he goes, oh, no. He goes, I used to live in Annapolis, and we used to visit Salisbury, we used to go to the zoo and the Ward Museum. And those were his landmarks, so you should appreciate that, and that was the conversation I had in South Carolina.
I do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I was remiss in welcoming John Palmer, who's with the Wycomico County Board of Education. He's here. April Jackson from the Salisbury City Council. We also have Wycomico County at Large-elect Bill McCain here, and the Honorable Delegate Cherie Sample Hughes. Glad to have you all here today. Thank you. Ms. Hurley?
Okay. The next two items on the agenda are related. First is the submission of an appointment to the Commission on Aging. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the county executive is to submit appointments to boards or commissions to council for confirmation at a legislative session. The Director of Administration has submitted the name of Dennis W. Kilma to the Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging assists the elderly in Wycomico County with health, social, economic, recreation, and environmental problems. Resolution Number 132, 2018, is confirming the appointment of Dennis W. Kilma, PTMS, PhD, GCS, to the Commission on Aging.
Thank you. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 132, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 133, 2018, declaring that First Move Properties LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 132 East Main Street, Salisbury, Maryland. In order for a business to qualify for enterprise zone benefits, it must meet one of the two specific statutory requirements, which are that the business must either make an investment of more than $50,000 in capital improvements or hire new employees since they've been located in the zone. First Move Properties LLC qualifies for the enterprise zone benefits because of its investment of more than $50,000 into the property located in the zone, and we do have Laura Soper here of the City of Salisbury, who's the enterprise zone coordinator.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 133, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution 133, 2018 is approved. Thank you, Ms. Soper.
Next is Resolution Number 134, 2018, declaring 1,690 linear feet of county-owned property known as 60-Foot Road from a point 0.13 of a mile south of Maryland 346, Old Ocean City Road, to the intersection of US Route 50 as surplus, and authorizing the conveyance of the property to the state of Maryland to the use of the state highway administration. Council held a work session on this request on October 2, followed by a public hearing on November 6. The next step is to vote on the resolution today.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 134, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 135, 2018, extending the date for voting on Legislative Bill 2018-05, Amendment Number One, to transfer the appropriation from use of prior year funds account to the transfer to other account in the amount of $254,758.15 in the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Per Charter Section 311, all legislation not passed within 60 days after its introduction shall fail unless five members of council affirmatively vote to extend this deadline. A recommendation has been made to extend the deadline to vote on the legislative bill to January 15, 2019, to allow additional time for public input and for new council members to become familiar with the project and the project funding.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. So this could be a, this could be a close one. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 135, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution 135, 2018 is approved unanimously.
All five of those. Sufficient?
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Taylor. How are you?
Good morning again. This is my second item for today. This is introduction of Legislative Bill Number 2018-12, which is an act to provide in Chapter 77, titled Roads and Improvements, Article 1, titled General Provisions, Section 77-1, titled General Powers, that the Director of Public Works is authorized to install and maintain traffic control devices to the extent allowed by applicable law. This bill is introduced today by the Council President at the request of the county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertain a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill Number 2018-12.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I did have some comments, which I've sent to council on it, and I'll be glad to summarize or elaborate those if you want me to.
If you would like to give us a brief review, yes.
I think that, as I said, I think earlier, this may not actually be even necessary except to clear up some uncertainty that existed this summer, as I understand it, in regard to who decides where stop signs go, and to some extent, how is that decision made? I think right now, under our charter and code, as I say, the default provision would be that it's in the county executive's office, specifically the Department of Public Works. The uncertainty apparently had to do with whether the council should be involved in the decision-making process. I think that was the main issue, not necessarily the standards that have to be applied. But as it turns out, there are state standards that pretty much govern this, and the only kind of remaining thing, I guess, to think about or consider is whether the council should have any role, and if not, whether there should be any specific direction in the code as to where in the executive branch that decision is to be made. Obviously, what's been proposed says that the Director of Public Works has that authority, which is fine. It also says that he has the authority to place and maintain signs. I think there's no question that that's in the executive branch to begin with. I mean, you wouldn't expect the council to go out and put up stop signs and maintain them. So I have suggested a slightly different version that makes a little bit of an adjustment as to that and provides only that the administration on the location of the signs is going to be within the, specifically in the code designated to the Director of Public Works, because I think that covers the uncertainty that was the cause for this whole evolution. The way it's been proposed is certainly okay. I don't think it's necessary to go to the extent of saying he has the authority to put up the signs, because that's obvious now in the code and the charter that that's within the executive branch.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any questions, comments? Mr. Taylor, I guess the question I would have is, if there was one party that wanted a sign in a particular neighborhood, and there was another party that did not, and they came to their, you know, their local council representative, would the council then just have to steer that toward the executive branch and just say, hey, we have to be hands off on this?
Well, I think under either version, what's been introduced and what I've proposed, that would be the case. Now, if council wants to be involved in that, then one or the other has to be changed to provide for that.
Well, the only reason I would involve the council is because sometimes I think it's, you know, circumstances might arise where it needs to be vetted publicly.
Well, then I think we need to go back and look at the legislation further, because I don't think either what's been proposed by the executive.
No, it doesn't.
And what I've proposed, it doesn't do that, because my understanding, and I think theirs too, was that council didn't want to be involved in that process. Now, that was just as a result of the work session, and it may be a misimpression on my part, and possibly theirs too.
Council, how about?
Well, the other part of that is, you know, the council wanting to be involved. I think the citizens might want the council involved to a point, you know, where they would, if they don't get the satisfaction they're asking for, I guess, and so.
Well, I'm not trying to make the policy decision for you, but just to point out that if you do want that oversight ability, then I think probably some adjustment should be made in whatever you adopt. I mean, I guess you could leave it on the basis of we can always amend the code and provide for council oversight if a real sticky situation arose with the public, but it would probably be good practice to address that now rather than at the moment that it heats up.
Well, with this being an introduction, there would be a public hearing, and then we would take a formal vote on the actual bill itself. In that, in the interim, would it be possible to, at least for you to, put together some type of a proposed amendment if the council wants, wishes to do this, maybe considering an amendment that might also include council's authority? And then we could vote that down if we don't like it, but something that maybe we could consider.
Well, it's either, would be either, I guess, to table this or to bring it up in second reading and change it. What occurs to me is what you're thinking about would be something like when somebody gets a water assessment for broken pipe. We've been through those where it can eventually, if there's no resolution to the homeowner's satisfaction, come before the council. That might be, if that's a mechanism that seems like it would be appropriate for you all.
What's the council's take on this?
I kind of think the same thing Councilman Holloway was saying. The citizens may want us to have some involvement in it, because we're usually the first ones they call.
Mine is, I think there should be a strictly executive branch function. It's, I don't think we are experts on where stop signs go. Having sat through a meeting with Broad's Department about a stop sign, you know, there's a lot more goes into it than just do people want a stop sign or not want a stop sign. There's traffic control issues and stuff that was way above my pay grade. So these really shouldn't be political decisions. They should be more decisions left with the experts, you know, in who we hire, the Broad's Department, or ultimately, you know, Public Works Director. So I'd be against it, but I'm, you know, one of seven, so.
Anyone else? Again, you know, my concern is sometimes when people go to government and they get a flat-out rejection, they feel, oh, who, where can I go? Who represents me? Where's my voice in the public? And this could be an entire neighborhood that may have that feeling, because sometimes the smallest things turn into the biggest issues. It's not, to me, it's not a concern of control one way or the other. I think Councilman Holloway said it perfectly, that the citizens might want the council involved in this process. And I don't think that the council's going to be overbearing on this. I don't think that we would, and we're not going to really, you know, a lot of times, 90% of what comes across this table, we end up in agreement, especially when it involves Public Works, because we respect and appreciate Mr. Dallas and Mr. Baker's opinion on much of this. But I think, I mean, I personally would like to see something at least brought forward for a discussion when we do the actual passing of the legislative bill as to whether or not we want to amend it at that time. Would that be the appropriate venue to consider that amendment?
Yeah, I think maybe the thing to do, frankly, would be possibly to have another work session and discuss exactly how you want to do it. I mean, one way to do it would be just instead of the county executive having oversight, if the county council has oversight. I didn't read the, I wasn't at the work session on this, but I did listen to the audio of it. I didn't think that was what was intended, but if that is the desire, then it needs to be changed. Now, if you want something more as, there would be an appeal level within the executive branch, and if that was unsatisfactory to the person or group, then it would come before the council on a petition basis, which you could or could not decide to hear, then that would be another mechanism. So, I mean, that's sort of, to me, a couple of ways of skinning that cat if the council wants to have some continuing involvement in this.
Well, I think from what Mr. Cannon said, you know, we always respect the opinion of, you know, our Public Works folks, but, you know, however we set this up, if they do, if citizens can come to us, we're going to hear both sides, and we'll hear the reasonings why and why not. You know, it might be something that's completely out of the norm, that we should not be placing a sign at a certain location, but in some cases, I would say that, you know, it doesn't really call for it, but if there was a sign there, it would make a lot of difference. You see what I'm saying to anyone, you know, and just as fact of satisfying, you know, satisfying the citizens, so.
I think Dallas may be a little more familiar with the actual regulations.
State name.
Sorry, Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. One of the things I'd suggest is that, you know, there are certain classifications of signs where, like Councilman Kilmer suggested, it's regulatory, stop signs, yield signs, one-way signs, or certain things that, you know, they're designed to not be political. I think instances that we're discussing here are places that fall into the gray zone, where someone says, I want to make a road no parking. What, where does that gear into? Now, there's instances where it is regulatory for no parking if you have, for instance, a sight distance issue, and you need to get cars off of the roads just to prevent accidents. But if it's just a nuisance of, I don't like all these trucks parked on my road, how do I get them off there? So I think if there is a change to the legislation, it should be specific to those gray areas and to exclude things like regulatory signs, like traffic control signs, like warning signs, guide signs. There's a list, and I can provide that information to council, what might fall into that category of, in my experience, what has generated the most, the loudest voice from the public. And that way, it kind of narrows the field, because again, I don't think you want a lot of fingers in the pot when it comes to putting in a stop sign, because you're right, people will disagree, and that's why there's specific guidelines to back where stop signs and other regulatory signs go.
If you could supply us with that, that would be great. I think another reason, as far as the justification for this is, I know Councilman Holloway is, what, 2008, where you specifically, I wouldn't say over-road, but you pushed to have the speed limit changed?
I was just thinking about that.
What was that?
It was Out and Road.
Out and Road, yeah.
And the county executive at the time refused to lower the speed limit, and, you know, it turned into a kind of a political thing, I guess. The folks, the whole neighborhood out there, Nottingham Woods, wanted the speed limit lowered on Out and Road, and it was refused, and finally, the Daily Times got a hold of it, and it got into the paper, and, you know, that's the only way they've got their speed limit lowered, by making it a political issue. And it shouldn't turn into that, you know, it really shouldn't. We could have, we could have, the council at the time, I think, could have had some input on that, but we didn't.
We did, but not at the table, but we did have.
Yeah, I mean, we pushed, you know, everybody who's in agreement to have it done, so.
And I don't think that, when you establish the procedure for Public Works going in and putting up street signs, just because a street sign goes up does not mean that thing is set in stone. You know, there is always, if, whether it's on the state or the federal or the local level, you know, changes are initially made. If there's a large outcry, I've seen them reversed based off of public input, even if, you know, we're just establishing the procedure for, hey, this is the steps you go to get something installed. If something's not liked, if the community disagrees with it, just because the procedure was followed, doesn't mean they don't have the right to come here and public comment and voice their opinion, and you guys tell me, hey, we need to look at changing something back, because the community's not happy.
Well, you see, that again is another part of the issue, whereas we can't come directly to you.
No, no, I mean, the public.
I understand, I understand. So I think we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, I just mean, they come to the government.
I appreciate it, yes.
I don't know if I made it clear that was a prior county executive, too, that, so. See, Bob said.
If the executive Culver or comes to me and says, hey, we got to change stuff up, of course, I'll follow the direction of the leadership.
You don't do everything he says, do you?
No. I did change councils.
Mr. Taylor, did you have a comment?
Let me, can I ask Dallas?
Yes.
Is the distinction you're suggesting, Dallas, would it be that the items that come under the manual on uniform traffic control devices, that would be essentially executive, and then other things such as parking on streets? Because I don't think that comes under the manual.
Yeah.
That would be more possibly council overview.
I would think that there would at least be the avenue for public input. I don't, whether that's through the executive branch or through, I can tell you, you know, if someone's petitioning us for no parking on certain streets, just because we get one call in doesn't mean I'm going to go out there and start doing that. You start developing the feel for, okay, what you're asking for is going to generate some ire with your neighbors, so let's get a consensus from the community and see what's...
But that's not a manual thing, is it? That's been come under the traffic control devices mandate.
No, not so much. That, it does in the sense of, okay, if you've got a sight distance issue with parking, then it's a little more clear cut. It's the issues of, hey, you know, I've got a truck parked, someone parked a tractor-trailer truck on the shoulder of the road in a community. We're tired of seeing it there. We want it gone, but the person owns the property, that's, owns the truck, and then the community comes together and says they don't want any parking on the road. So those are typically the situations where you see where it becomes grayer, and that's...
Maybe Dallas could suggest.
If you hang on, one second. Ms. Hurley, our timeframe as far as, we could, of course, still introduce this legislation, and then what our timeframe would be to also have a work session before we had the final vote?
You have 60 days from the date of introduction to take action.
So we'd have plenty of time for both.
You do?
Thank you very much.
Maybe Dallas could suggest to us some...
In the interim, we'll have that time. We'll schedule.
Way to cut the mustard on this, Dallas.
All right. We'll finish the introduction, and then we will schedule a work session, do a final vote, and in the interim, we can decide as to whether or not it's justifiable to have an amendment prepared. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2018-12?
Aye.
Everybody?
Yes.
Opposed? Legislative bill number 2018-12 has been introduced unanimously. At this time, you're done, right?
I'm done. We can schedule a public hearing if you want, or if you want to wait until the work session to do that.
We'll wait until the work session?
Okay.
As long as it doesn't drag, as long as it doesn't move us past the deadline. Okay? Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name and your county of residence and your concern.
My name is James Yamakawa, Wycomico County, District Two. Two years ago, I and others in our community held a candlelight vigil for a young black man lynched by a mob in Salisbury named Matthew Williams. That was in 1931, December. Last year around this time, I and others in this community took part in a soil collection, collecting jars of soil from seven sites around Wycomico and Somerset County, including Matthew Williams. Those jars are now in display at the Legacy Museum in Montgomery, Alabama. Last spring, myself and my family traveled down to Alabama to, for the opening week of the National Memorial for Peace and Justice, where there is a steel column waiting for Wycomico County to claim and display somewhere in the county. Just a few weeks ago, I attended a conference in Baltimore for the Maryland Lynching Memorial Project, where residents from all over the state of Maryland came together to start figuring out where we wanted to go from here. A week ago, I sent a letter out to all members of the county council concerning an event on this December 4th, 2018, flowers for Matthew Williams, and I want to come and extend my invitation personally. The papers display that, as well as additional information. On December 4th, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., I invite you to come to the east side of the old Wycomico County Courthouse and to offer a moment of prayer and silence. If you are able to, leave a flower, and to acknowledge this history. That's pretty much it. I'm going to leave with a quote from Bryan Stevenson, the founder of the Equal Justice Initiative. "You can't demand truth and reconciliation. You have to demand truth. People have to hear it, and then they have to want to reconcile themselves to that truth." Thank you.
My name is Mary Ashanti. I'm President of Wycomico County, NAACP. First giving an honor to God to President Cannon and members of the county council. I do reside in Wycomico County. Two things. One, I praise Mr. Yamakawa. I hope I messed your name up, James. I want to praise him for his work, and we are willing, I personally willing to follow his leadership. Second, I see on the, in the open work session, the status of Wycomico County Nursing Home. If you are looking at either selling it or getting rid of it, whatever, I hope you will have a public hearing and really see how the community, what the community feel about... have a public hearing and really see how the community, what the community feel about that nursing home. Years ago, I brought my father from North Carolina and put him into Wycomico Nursing Home. And it afforded me the opportunity to visit him every day. And I know that quite a few other people are interested in that nursing home. So again, if you decided that you are, it's not profitable or whatever, I hope you will talk to the community about that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shaw.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Katrina Purnell. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Several things, I thank Mr. James for his efforts. Secondly, for what Sister Ashanti said about Wycomico Nursing Home, it was started by Mrs. Polk, a citizen of Wycomico County and an educator in Wycomico County, to provide nursing facilities for people in our community because we were not receiving it. And if you are gonna do something with that, I would hope, as she indicated, that you will contact the people of the county who's most affected by the change that you all do. That's the first, that's the second thing. And next, I still have a burn over the landfill. The landfill, the landfill, the landfill. When you had your meeting at the Civic Center, I was educated and told that you were modeling it after Mount Trashmore in Portsmouth, Virginia. So I Googled, you know, modern science, and it listed, I said, I wanted to know the relationship to cancer with Mount Trashmore in Portsmouth, Virginia. It popped up. The people of Portsmouth, death rate of cancer is the highest in Virginia. The highest. It listed that at a rate of 226.5 per 1,000 people, according to the Virginia Department of Health, while the national level is 175.3, the state of Virginia's rate in that particular area is 177.4. That's higher than national average. My concern continues to be, is not that you not put it on the west side, because I'm not wanting to trade my community for somebody else's community. I want it, see it put in a place and handled where people do not feel the results of it after several years, after you guys are all gone. My concern is that I asked the question the last time, is anybody could tell me that layer that you put between the trash and the things that you're gonna use from Purdue to the water table, which is only gonna be four and a half feet difference? How are you handling that? So since no one would answer the question, I bought a chicken, put it in a black trash bag, set it out in my back patio and let it stay there. After about a month, it started leaking, smelled awful. So I don't know the relationship or the thickness of the fiber that you're gonna use for that trash dump, and no one will tell me that, that means that there is gonna be some seepage. Chickens have acid, they have ammonia. Everybody in the room knows that ammonia will eat anything. So what are you gonna do about our water table that we have? The payload channel is what everybody uses in this area. And what are you gonna do to prevent it? We have a large cancer rate in our neighborhood already. The lady from Nail and Mill Road Trailer Park cried at that meeting to say her water is already polluted. People from the county come there every month and dump stuff in her well so that she can use the water. She can't drink it. She can use it to cook with, and she says she doesn't even use that, and this is from her when you guys were there, that it cannot even be used, that she boils it because when she turns on the faucet, all she smells is bleach. What are we doing here? You know, that, I believe that we are supposed to look for the benefit of all our citizens and not continually put it there. The site you all set in your meeting is that the dump now uses six cells, six, for that dump. You're gonna add ten, four more under the present agreement. Then you want to add 12 more? That means 16 more cell sites. That's almost, it's gonna be three times the size that it is right now. What in the world? I know you look for economics. I know that's what you all depend on. But we are not all renters. We pay taxes. We should be afforded the same privilege and decency that you give to everyone else in the county. What you're doing to us is grossly unfair, and it's already been documented. I asked for someone to tell me what the rate was. My number's in the phone book and no one's ever called me. I've had the same telephone number since 1973. Same telephone number. No one's ever directed any answers to the questions. I've done it the last time you talked or when you were at the Civic Center. All I'm asking you is, I don't know the rush for it, since you've got four more cells that you can use, so while we're trying to do these other 16s in such a fashion at the rate that you're doing, I have a quandary for it. It makes me nervous when people are trying to do stuff and don't want to answer my questions. That's just Katrina. But it makes me awful nervous when you all do that kind of stuff. The election's over, you can breathe your sigh of relief that we don't come at you again for another two years, but I'm asking four years. See, I'm trying to rush you out. At any rate, the only thing I can ask you is, we're not gonna be here always, and what are you guys gonna do when God requires your soul?
Mrs. Purnell, if I could ask you quickly.
Ask me.
Yeah, the Mount Rushmore, is there data that linked the deaths in the area to the Mount Trashmore?
I did, it, some of it does, but what I Googled was, I wanted to know the cancer death rate of Mount Trashmore in Portsmouth, Virginia. And this is the article that popped up. It has data from the health department, from the state of Virginia, from Portsmouth, from the areas of Virginia Beach, all those people in that area. It doesn't start cleaning up until you get out of that area where the cancer death rate lessens. And it doesn't say cancer rate, it says the cancer death rate.
I think that, you know, I speak for the council when I say that I know that we're as concerned about any community in Wycomico County. We don't differentiate between where that community might be. We would be equally concerned about any neighborhood in Wycomico County and the safety of those individuals. What I could suggest, and Weston Young always loves it when I volunteer him, but he doesn't hesitate because he knows the facts and the figures. With the cells, we do follow very stringent guidelines, state guidelines and regulations that we have to follow in order to even put the cells in the ground. And Weston, I think, could give you a very good overview of what those regulations are, if that might be any comfort.
I already looked that up.
Okay, I'm sure you did.
Yes, I already looked that up. And what I also want to say about that is, is that in the last few years, the water table is rising. So if when you did your research to say that the level that would be safe was four point and a half feet below where the, where the layer started that you covered up with, that's gotta be adjusted. Can I show you some pictures of what it looked like on Lake Street and Jersey Road when we had the rain and we couldn't get through? Every time we have a heavy rain, it always floods on Lake Street. This was at Morris Street by the middle school. It was so much water, we had to go around, and when we went around, we had to go all the way around 13 and then come back down.
Right.
So if that's the area and you're still wanting to put things in there and the table is continually to rise, somebody is trying to flip the script.
Well, if you would, please, get the information from Mr. Weston Young, his card.
Same number since 1973.
Did you get that, Mr. Young?
I did.
Thank you. Any, Ms. Purnell, you're always very, very energetic, very enthusiastic and very interesting to listen to. Thank you.
You're very welcome because that's what my father requires for me to be honest.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Councilman, yes.
Ms. Katrina?
Yes.
I think you came in late. The Potts property that the county was trying to acquire to move the landfill further, the county executive has withdrawn from purchasing that at the time.
Well, that's absolutely great. I didn't mind being late, but I have to be employed so I can pay my bills.
I understand. Any other council comments? Presidential comments, I would, the same as Councilman Holloway, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and if you're gonna be driving during the holidays, please drive safely and I only wish you the best. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3, 305, V18 as follows, "To discuss a personnel matter to protect the confidentiality of the individual and to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position." Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post? Means adjourned. Both means adjourned.
Always does very well, as you can see, a hundred participants. And again, that kind of gives the kids an opportunity to, you know, work with the players that they see on an everyday basis and kind of get a little bit of interaction rather than just seeing them hit the ball or strike out on a daily night baseless. And then just collectively with the value of our tickets and how that relates to hit the books. And we do a summer reading program with the local libraries, of course. Wacomiko Library is very active and we bring players over and always seems to be our best in our best appearance every year. You know, collectively, you know, forty-five thousand tickets donated to schools. That, you know, of course encompasses directly to games. But just in general, the community footprint that we continue to have with these programs and all of our community programs that, as you folks are browsing through the booklet, this is really just a snapshot of everything that we've done. You know, of course, we'll be participating from a staff level. We were at Mount Air yesterday for Thanksgiving for thousands. Of course, we have the hectic Christmas parade season coming up and we'll have our hot stove banquet in January. And just throughout the year, we're constantly finding ways to be involved, not only just with our current partners, but other organizations. And there's always going to be something else we can do and we're always active and open to do so. So, we appreciate you guys having us this morning and certainly let us know if you have questions as far as the community report is concerned. But continue to be very proud as a front office in all that we do. And, you know, we're glad to be a great, great community partner in this area. So, it's awesome.
Any questions?
I've got a few of those jerseys in my closet.
Alright, there you go.
When you have a young boy that loves baseball and he sees a player that he likes or a number and he wants that jersey and you have to invest. So, it's nice to have those and it's great to be here. When is the hot stove banquet in January? Have you got a date on that yet?
It's Thursday, January twenty-fourth. And we've booked, I'll let Eric say his name, I butcher his last name, I think. Tim Kirchen from ESPN will be here on January twenty-fourth to speak to our fans. And that's a fundraising event also with the portion of the proceeds going to our local United Way here in town. But Thursday, here at the Civic Center.
Are you, do you have a float in the Christmas parade?
We have usually a vehicle that Sherman participates in and so we don't have a physical built float.
Right.
Yeah, we participate, probably participate in somewhere between nine to ten. Christmas parades a year, some of them are on the same night, so they're hard to get to. But, you know, we're, we try to be at all of them that we can, but we're always in Salisbury's Parade and, you know, Ocean City, Wacomiko. And then we try to, from time to time, mix up some of the smaller towns that may be on the same dates or same times as others, you know, rotate every other year, whether it be Delmar or others that have parades.
I don't do as much social media as I know some of the other councilmen do. And I want to try to get a little more active in it, I guess. Do you guys have a very strong social media presence? Whereas, because you're talking about all these things that you're doing, all these places you're going, the first thing that came to my mind is, do you have someone there to take pictures of this and post it and, you know, get it out there in the public?
We are, we have a strong social following. We have over thirty-three thousand fans on Facebook and twenty-seven thousand, I think, on Twitter.
More than I have.
I don't do the Instagram and Snapchat and all these other things, but we have all the socials. And one of the things that we are changing that I'm not, that's why I think some of the conversations with Larry and others about coming here before you on an annual basis is that I really just, you know, look at doing good just for the sake of doing good. But I have learned over the last twelve years that it's important to share your story. I always looked at it as bragging and I don't brag, I don't like to do it, but the fact that you do need to share your story, we've never even really shared our story well within our league members and we won the award this year when we shared our story. I look at things that we live here, we want to play here, and we're all here every day. I mean, my kids go to school here, all that. So, we do a better job of sharing the moment, sharing what we're doing. And yeah, so we're actively trying to do a better job of sharing those things on social media.
I know exactly what you're saying there as far as not wanting to brag about things, but you'd be surprised at so many people out there that would really want to know that and would enjoy seeing that interaction, I think.
Yeah, and we've tried to do a good job on Facebook and Twitter in particular and Instagram. There was one yesterday, him posted digging around the.
Yeah, we're jumping in dumpsters.
Jumping in dumpsters, compacting trash, so.
It also makes it easier on us when we have to make decisions about funding priorities and do people know that, how good things are out there.
Well, I appreciate that. Hopefully, hopefully, hopefully for the next few years, all you're seeing is me coming out here to do this. Hopefully, we're through those ones. But yeah, I mean, and that's part of it is, is again, we just like to do right by who we are in the community. But doing this and putting these together, sharing them with our local, you know, dignitaries and others in the community and stakeholders is important. And that's why we're really making the conscious effort to do a better job and not just doing right for doing right. But again, we're using the term "share our story" versus bragging. Makes me feel a little better saying it that way.
Blair?
We're fortunate to have the Shorebirds here because we see so many great players and superstars like Manny Machado and Dylan Bundy. Then we see children and grandchildren of stars. This summer, we had, I forgot his name, but his father was.
Zach Jarrett, Dale Jarrett, the NASCAR driver. And Ryan Ripken, Cal, so you guys probably saw the articles when Cal was in town about once a week or so.
Carl Strymsen's grandson was here.
Couple of years ago. And we have Alf Al Palmero's son as well.
Al Bumbry. So, we see so many offspring of superstars.
Yeah, and I think you'll see some excitement, just again, with the, I really enjoyed the previous regime. We had a great working relationship with Danny Kett and Bullock Showalter and those guys. And I think, you know, with obviously the changes, obviously bring some new excitement as well. And I think you'll continue to see those changes and really related to the field side of things, how that trickles down to us as well.
We took a tour of it, I took a tour of it with my wife a few weeks back and very impressed with how things are coming along. It looks, the stadium looks great. And that's the real key, is you take care of it. You don't feel like it's an old stadium. It always is, you've been modernizing it constantly and looking out for that. The place looks fantastic, so.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that. And we get that comment a lot, particularly from folks out of the area, that when they come here and they'll ask, "How old's the stadium?", we tell them, you know, twenty-three, going on twenty-four. You know, they really wouldn't know and that's been part of the plan of, you know, trying to maintain the place on a regular basis. And then now, you know, the last three or four years of work we've been doing to modernize it so that hopefully, you know, in another twenty years, it still looks and feels good and is current and, you know.
So glad you got rid of those aluminum bleachers. They have individual seats, which are more comfortable.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Gentlemen?
Well, we appreciate the council's support.
Thank you.
And everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too.
We'll move on.
We appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Dallas Baker, on an active morning, the MS4 permit update. I think it's sort of the flash drive, if you want to just give that to.
This gentleman in the back room turned the monitor off earlier.
It's showing on the, it's not on that, he cut it off. How's Wes? How's Dallas?
Okay, so Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county.
We have it over here.
That's on air, that's on air, correct?
There it is.
It's on air, yeah. I don't know why I put it off.
Okay, which one is, which one is on air? This one?
This is, this is the on-air and this is the PowerPoint.
Great, okay, thank you.
So, many times in the council conversations, whether it's about drainage issues or the Chesapeake Bay cleanup effort, the TMDL, also known as the WIP, the MS4 has been brought up about potential regulations. Dallas has put together a presentation where he'll touch on aspects of what this MS4 or what stands for municipal separate storm sewer system permit implies. And, you know, we'll be glad to answer any questions after the presentation.
So, one of the things I want to talk about upfront is the difference between a Phase One community and a Phase Two community. A lot of times you'll hear in the news about how expensive the MS4 permit is. There's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars of resources required to address the requirements in the permit. And there's this, the MS4 program makes a distinction between large communities, medium communities, and small communities. The large communities are places like Anarundel County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, PG, Montgomery County. Medium ones are the Carroll, Charles, Harford, Frederick, and Howard. And then there's, State Highway itself has its own separate MS4 permit for the storm drain system it runs. But when you're talking about trying to address a twenty percent treatment of impervious areas in areas like PG and Montgomery County and Anarundel County, the price tag is substantially higher when you think about how much impervious area they have. Now, you switch that over to an area such as Wacomiko County where we're largely rural, that impervious area reduction is significantly reduced. So, the numbers are saying, "Oh, well, I hear the MS4 is going to cost us three-hundred million dollars." That's not accurate for Wacomiko County. That might be accurate for a place like Montgomery County where everything's been paved over. But here, we have a substantially less effort to put into our permit than what those places do. So, when we talk about the Phase Two permit, this is just for our county. What we're looking at is three parts to the program. The Chesapeake Bay restoration, meaning our TMDL goals. They outline several minimum control measures that we have to establish. And then we have to do evaluation reporting, record keeping, which basically just amounts to an annual report each year of the efforts that we've been undertaking throughout the county. So, again, it's really the difference between what's required from the larger counties over on the western shore versus us. And we're not going to see the type of, you know, millions of dollars of price tags associated with this permit that, you know, sometimes the media will try to get everybody spun up about.
Let me go back one.
Yeah.
In layman's terms, what does that mean when you say Phase Two permits involve several parts? I mean, what is that, what are those obligations to Wacomiko County?
That's what the next.
Next slide tells us.
Yeah, everything through this, through this presentation addresses these three bullets. I'm going to walk us, what I'm basically going to do with this presentation is walk us through the requirements of the permit. Okay, so let's talk about the first bullet, meeting our TMDL goals. What you see up here is a map of what MDE has established as, I'll call it Wacomiko County's metro core, which is the purple area outlined on the map. Now, inside of that is obviously Salisbury, Fruitland, Delmar's metro core. We are not responsible for anything inside the orange area. We're responsible for the difference between where Salisbury's metro core ends and where MDE says the county's metro core ends. So, we're looking at places out on Nanicoke Road, we're looking at areas out in the Parsonsburg, we're looking at areas up in the Hebron that, again, are outside of the metro core. So, what we have to do is address twenty percent of the stormwater runoff from those areas. That can be done through establishing stormwater management ponds. It can be done by reducing impervious area or any combination thereof to show that we're treating twenty percent of that area, okay?
Is that, Keith, you made, is this, does this coordinate with the designated growth area? And I don't even think they use that term anymore, do they? Designated growth area? But is that purple area, Keith?
Actually, the purple area that you're seeing is what's starting to urbanize the area of the Salisbury-Wacomiko region. That's developed by the Census Bureau every ten years to go in as part of the Senate Census. They look for certain thresholds, one mainly being population, a thousand persons per square mile or so. So, no, it doesn't, when you hear metro core, it is a distinct use of the word versus our designated growth area.
So, it's kind of separate from the, those two, okay. All right, thank you, Keith.
So, so within that, you know, there's some of those areas that are in this purple, like on Nanicoke Road, where there's been some flooding issues and things like that. So, as we undertake some of our drainage issues, like I think Pratt Road looks like it's in there, for instance. So, would that, our drainage issues, if we address the Pratt Road area, would that count towards this permits goals? Because we're treating, you know, trying to, how would those work together?
Yes, there are lots of opportunities within the MS4 program to overlap with our WIP goals, with our TMDL goals. All of these projects are, you know, there's outlined fringes where they don't overlap, but there's a lot of places where they really do. So, if we were to go in and adjust stormwater management in a certain area, we can look for opportunities to say, "Okay, well, if we, if we address one part and then do a little bit more, we can have, meet WIP goals and MS4 both within one project." So, there's lots of opportunities for overlap.
Yeah, and meet our drainage, our stormwater.
Exactly, exactly. So, when we're calculating this twenty percent, what we, what we look at isn't just the, that area. So, between the purple line and the orange line, it's, we calculate, which is currently being done, how much impervious area is between those two, those two boundaries, okay? And that's being done with, in partnership with SU and the Eastern Shore Regional GIS Center. They've calculated that, that's a hundred percent complete. So, that was, that's the first step. Next we go and then we start subtracting out all of the areas that have been, already have stormwater management practices in place. So, if you've got a stormwater management pond that was built between two thousand and two and two thousand and sixteen, we can subtract that area out already. ESRGC is working on that right now and they're about fifteen percent complete on that. So, once you subtract out that, you have to treat twenty percent of the remaining area. Now, any area within that that was, has a BMP between two thousand and six and now that was built, you can count that towards your reduction. So, if, if after your calculations, you say, "All right, we need to treat a hundred acres." And we have, since two thousand and six, built forty acres worth of ponds, now we're only treating sixty percent of what's remaining. So, you slowly subtract down all of these different requirements so that you can keep whittling down the actual area you have to treat and trying to minimize that. Because the less, the smaller area you have to treat countywide reduces how much money you've got to spend to do that treatment, okay? And there are, again, ESRGC is working on this. This meeting the, I'll say, coming up with the, how much area we have to treat within this, this boundary is one of our year-one goals. So, the permit went into effect October thirty-first of this year. We have until October thirty-first of next year to complete it. We are on track to complete this item by April of two thousand and nineteen. So, we're almost six months ahead of when it's due. We're going to be on track to have this calculation done and up to MDE as part of the permit. We started working on this before we got, we knew it was coming, so we started working on it last year.
Where's the orange line? I was trying to look at the map. All I see is a red line, is that it?
Yeah, orange, red, sorry, it's, yeah, the red line.
Yeah. So, nothing beyond that line?
No, what we're looking at is what's between the red line and the purple line.
Okay. Why not beyond?
Because beyond the purple line is what MDE is saying, classifying as, you know, a rural area. It doesn't meet the, the population density.
Right, but why not beyond the orange line that you're showing up here, like further out in the county?
Well, what's, what's inside the orange line is what's the responsibility of the city of Salisbury. It's the responsibility of Fruitland. The county's responsible beyond the municipal boundary, but out to where development has occurred within the county. Does that answer your question?
As the name of the permit implies, municipal, separate storm sewer.
So, I'm assuming everything in that metro core area, that's not municipality. It would be the responsibility of the county.
Within a certain density of population. So, when you go down to Tiaskin, for instance, it's so sparsely populated, MDE's not concerned about addressing it. They've got enough area between where their impervious area is to drain, you know, it runs over grass, it runs through streams, it runs through roadside ditches. So, that before it hits the bay, it's had enough time to interact with a dirt-vegetated surface to remove those nutrients. Whereas, these areas where the population is clustered together, you have to take additional steps to make sure that you're removing and reducing that nutrient before it gets to the river.
I get it now.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, working on the first-year impervious area work plan. This work plan that's developed is outlined specifically in the permit with, with everything we have to do in the first year. So, again, developing our impervious area baseline assessment. As I mentioned, we're due to have this completed this coming April. We have to develop a restoration work plan, which is how are we going to? Now, once we know what area we have to treat, then we have to develop a plan of how are we going to treat that area. We don't actually have to do it, we just have to tell them how we think we're going to do it. We have to look for opportunities for implementing water quality BMPs. Again, this is where we're talking about, you know, looking for those projects to overlap with, with our WIP projects. Or, you know, as Mark had mentioned, Pratt Road. If we're going to be doing a drainage project there, that would be an opportunity for us to go in and address the need for this MS4 permit. Looking for opportunities to develop partnerships with other NPDS permotees. So, if we know that Salisbury, for instance, is going to be addressing a particular area with a, with a stormwater project, maybe there's an opportunity for us to partner with them and make it a little bit bigger and we both benefit from it. So, you're just looking for what other places. In our areas, there's only, there's only a handful. We've got Salisbury and Fruitland, I believe, are the only two other MS4 permit holders within the county. And then we also need to determine our funding needs in developing a long-term budget.
I would like to add, for the Phase One permits, they require significantly more steps, such as mandatory street sweeping and certain programs like that. That is where the concept of the rain tax came, came about, was how do you fund these permits that are putting such constraints on these larger, highly, you know, impervious, as Dallas was saying, cities or counties like Baltimore City, you know, the property values as well to put in a buyer retention or a pond, isn't the same as down here in Wacomiko. So, their costs to handle these types of permits are significantly more, so they looked at funding mechanisms. I want to say our intentions are to try to do it all in-house. It will require additional paperwork. We may need a position or two down the road, but I don't currently see anything too crazy. Like, I don't, I don't see us coming before you asking for a rain tax of any, of any sort.
So, how often do we do street sweeping? Because I know we do some for Fruitland.
See, well, we have, we have two street sweepers and seven hundred miles of road. They generally take about eighteen months to complete all seven hundred miles of road.
Eighteen months?
You don't use the street sweepers on a lot of the county roads?
Well, no. We, what ends up happening is we tend to visit the same areas more than once. You know, if, what I'll say is, if we took to the two street sweepers and ran them through the seven hundred miles of road, it would take us eighteen months. However, there are places that don't particularly need street sweeping, you know. And there's places that need it more frequently through some of these residential communities. So, we tend to, the hotspots tend to get hit more frequently. You will send them out ahead of storms if we know that there's inlets as opposed to open drainage. If the road drains directly to a swale on the side of the road, those areas don't need, it's not as critical to street sweep those areas as it is to, say, go in to a place that has curbing and inlets and you need to make sure that they're clear. So, so you're right, there are roads that we don't go through and street sweep.
What roads do you predominantly street sweep? Are they neighborhoods that where we have taken over those properties?
Yeah, it's not that we've taken over the properties, they're county roads.
I mean, the roads.
Yeah, county roads within residential communities are frequented. As I mentioned, if they have curbing, if they have storm drain inlets as opposed to some type of open drainage system are the locations. Places that we see frequent litter at, you know, some roads have, people just, whether it's proximity to the landfill, you know, we'll typically do places like Bricktown a little more frequently out there in front of the landfill, so.
And why I ask that, really what Councilman Holloway was saying, when you think of street sweeping, you think in the municipality and not on the county roads. And that was part of the Phase One.
So, so one of the, I guess, thoughts behind the MS4 permit is that if, say, you had a bucket of polluted water and you dumped it in rural parts of the county, it's going to go into a ditch and infiltrate. Whereas, if you dump it, say, right outside this building, it's going to go into a pipe network and go right into the river without any sort of infiltration or treatment. So, the MS4 permit acts as sort of good housekeeping for urban areas. Because if you have a spill, it goes right into pipes in most cases and goes. So, street sweeping, you're trying to keep leaves, trash, depending on the sweeper or the vacuum method, you can get brake dust and other contaminants that are on the roadways and get them from going into the inlets and pipes, clogging them up and ultimately making their ways to the river. So, this is a mechanism to try to keep urban areas as clean as possible.
And this is, and this is an opportunity where a practice that we're already doing, we can then take credit for in the permit, so we're not spending money to go do something new. It's something that we already have the ability to do, so it's just, you know, maybe pulling that area of where we're street sweeping more frequently to hit the areas within, within the orange or the purple line.
You have, we have a lot of large parking lots in the city and the county. Is there anybody that, I know that a lot of them do their own sweeping. They have the guys go around at night, you see the little trucks run around at night. Is there any regulations controlling those to make sure that those drains are kept clean? You know, their parking lots are, you know, are functioning like they should after they're built? I know they're built specifications, you know, we put all that in. And then, is there anything ever done later to make sure that this parking lot's not clogged up or that parking lot isn't?
So, we have a gentleman that's our stormwater inspector that when, when, say, ponds are the most common stormwater thing people think of, he goes out to each site. I think it's on a three-year basis, worst case, it's every five years. But I think we aim for every three years, we go out to make sure it's operating as intended. I don't think, and Dallas can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we go into the level of street sweeping. We will look to say, "Look, your private pipes on your, in your, you know, parking lot are clogged and you need to clean those out." But really, it's, we look to see, all right, the purpose of stormwater is, there's several points to it, but one is not flood your neighbors, so what leaves your site is, is less than it would be with all the pavement on there. The second is to have it leave cleaner. And really, it's making sure that the pond is still functioning as it's intended. So, in these inspections, they'll call out if there's any visible issues or known issues, if it looks like what goes in, say sediment-laden runoff is then going out into streams. We, you know, work with those people to, to fix those.
Are we, we're in season for deciduous trees to start shedding and they have been. Do we educate the public on raking their leaves and disposing of them properly so they don't clog the drains?
We do try. I can't say it's always successful. We've experienced a lot of leaves clogging up driveway pipes during this time of the year. We were just out at a site off of, no, the road name's going to escape me now, Royal Oak, where we had a drainage problem. And when we looked into it, the neighbor down, two or three houses downstream of that was, where the flooding was occurring, two or three houses downstream, someone had filled up their swale with leaves, old newspapers. So, we got out there, cleared that out and got the water going. So, we try to tell people, "Look, please don't throw your leaves into these swales." A lot of times you'll see folks yard blowing them into the road. Again, we try to spell.
And I think that's against at least the municipal code. I don't know about the county code.
Yeah, what will typically happen is we'll get. Yeah, what will typically happen is we'll get calls from a neighbor saying, hey, so-and-so's blowing their leaves in there. And we go out and ask them, hey, please don't do it. Explain to them why. And in general, people are understanding of it.
Right. And I walk my dog a lot and I see a lot of the drains covered and that contributes to flooding as well. There's always a lot of debris covering, whether it's leaves, trash, sticks.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
Do you think some of the media outlets would be hoping to a public service announcement to announcing those kind of things?
That's certainly something we can explore.
Yeah, do a little commercial maybe that somebody could get on TV or, you know, radio and say, it's that time of the year, you know, keep your drains.
Sure. Which, one of the elements of the MS4 permit, and I don't know if we'll get to it, but is education and outreach. So explaining like, hey, when you put leaves, you know, there's better options to put, you know, put your leaves elsewhere. But once it gets into, say, a drain and a pipe and makes its way to the river, like that's added nutrients that break down over time. Which naturally, that's okay. But with development and just civilization, we tend to overwhelm our rivers and the bay. So, you know, even with leaves, it's like mulch them, keep them on site. It's good for your yard or compost. You know, we do accept the larger things like brush at our landfill.
For free.
Yeah, for free to citizens. So, yeah, there are opportunities there.
I like the idea of the PSAs.
Yeah. So I'm going to, you know, again, the permit has a specific work plan. I wanted to highlight what's required in this first year. Again, the clock just started ticking for us and we're well on our way to meeting the requirements for this first year. You can see here the years two, three. A lot of this is simply keeping our system updated with any new improvements that have been made, keeping track of what's been done, any new improvements that have been made or in keeping our reporting up to date. It's very similar through the future years. The goal of the permit is to see, to meet our 20% restoration by 2025. And one of the things too, that's very interesting with the county is that, you know, I was showing you that Metro Corps earlier, or the county corps earlier, and we do not have to limit all of our projects to just in that area. We can do projects outside of that and take credit for that 20% reduction. So for instance, the WIP project out there with Baron Creek can help meet our MS4 permit goals, even though it's outside of the boundary. The boundary tells us how much area we have to treat. That does not limit the projects to occur in that area. We can go around the county, which makes it easier. Easier, exactly. And that's where our advantage over places like PG and Montgomery. We've got land that we can go out and do things where we don't have to tear down four or five city blocks of concrete and asphalt. We've got an ability to meet these goals.
A lot of these individual years that you have describing here seem to just be somewhat rhetorical, where it says, you know, update the management practices. And I'm looking for hard-line statements that say, work on this, you know, work on the roads here. I don't see that. Now, is this after year five? I'm assuming it's 22 to 23? And it's between 22 and 23 and 25 that we really do the actual implementation?
These bullets are verbatim out of the permit. So they're left intentionally vague. The MDE wasn't trying to, you know, pin us down to something. It does allow flexibility on our part to say, okay, just keep meeting your goals. You know, it's, we have to keep a picture in our head of 20% reduction by 2025. But if we want to sit on our hands till 2024 and do all of it in the last year, we can do that. Or if you want to be responsible and spread it all out, you can do a little bit each year. MDE has allowed a lot of flexibility in meeting these goals. And you're right, I mean, when you read some of this, you know, submit a narrative describing your progress. Okay, that's the annual report. That's not hard to do at all. It doesn't say, go do this specific project. Remove X pounds of nitrogen from your waste stream. It's very.
The Phase 1s get into the specific, you know, projects and what is mandatory to do. And then if you don't meet those, you know, you're in trouble. This is a five-year permit. They come in five-year cycles. So at the end of year five, we'll then have a negotiation period with MDE where they will say, look, we saw what you did over the last five years. Environmental regulations are constantly changing over time. We now have these new requirements. If we drag our feet and they see that, then they can say, look, we're going to ramp it up and now we're going to add some enforcement mechanisms.
Well, I was kind of looking in this PowerPoint. I was looking at a description of what it actually was that we have been implementing. But I don't see where it says that in here.
Of what we have been implementing? Well, remember, the permit just started October 31st of this year.
Okay, so it is until, it is 2023 is probably when we're going to be effectively making
Yeah.
progress, is that right?
Sure.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we're talking about a permit that's been in effect for less than, you know, less than 30 days. But again, we've seen Salisbury, what they had to go through. We know what the Western Shore had to go through. This ball has been rolling for a very long time.
I got you.
One thing that, so we're on Phase 2 because that's for 100,000 people and fewer. Aren't we close, I mean, Wycomico County's population is right around 100,000, isn't it?
It's within that purple boundary that you saw.
Okay, 100,000 within the purple boundary, so it's not the entire county. It's, okay.
Yeah, so it's a density, if you can imagine, like Keith was mentioning earlier, if we had 100,000 people within that purple boundary, or as President Cannon was mentioning, the growth area isn't included because it hasn't been, you know, it hasn't grown out there yet. If we grow that, that purple boundary that Dallas showed will then start extending to. But again, it's assuming we have the densities out there.
So it's what we face to for a while.
We do have a census coming up too.
And we do have a census, yeah, and that could change the boundary. But you'll notice, like, the boundary went up to parts of Hebron. So when it gets to street sweeping, it's like, well, do we just, you know, skirt around some of these cities? That doesn't make, that doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of, but that's the boundary that they decided to stick with. The fact that we can do projects outside of the boundary and get credit for it, that's a major advantage. So that right there, you know, I said, we're very, we're okay with that because that helps us. So our typical WIP projects that we can put anywhere in a project, anywhere in the county, can help us meet that 20% impervious.
What involvement does the small municipalities, say like Pittsville, Willards, Hebron, Ardella have in this plan? You know, I know they don't have street sweepers, you know.
And they're not in the permanent areas.
So that doesn't affect them at all?
No, I mean, you know.
But I mean, could we use them as far as the street sweeping to, you know, to get our numbers better if we did their streets?
Yeah, right now, where there's, there are also pockets of impervious surface. So really, when we put in, you know, I'm sorry if we use acronyms sometimes, but BMP is best management practice. If we put in a best management practice, which could be a stormwater pond, could be buyer retention, we want more pavement and rooftops draining to that or as much as possible. Putting a buyer retention in an area that, you know, is all grass or all woods is kind of pointless. So that's why, like, okay, digging the pits out at Connolly Mill, that won't necessarily give us any WIP credits because we don't have pavement draining to it.
But one thing we can take credit for is the fact where we have open drainage systems, where our roads, the majority of our roads drain to swales. Those swales, we can claim credit for, for treatment on this MS4 program. So you start looking at, well, okay, well, what do we need to do here? Nothing, it's already done because the road drains to a swale. And then that swale travels for four or five miles before it ever hits the river. That type of thing is what we can already take credit for. Whereas again, looking back, Western Shore, everything's curbed and guttered. You don't see open swales.
When you say we can take credit for, that sounds like monopoly money to me. I don't know what that means.
That means, so if our goal is, we have to treat 100 acres of impervious surface. So let's say we calculate our area and it's 100 acres. We have to treat 20 acres of that area with some type of BMP, some type of stormwater management.
Okay.
So of that 20 acres, we say, well, we've got five acres of road that drain to swales. Well, now we're down to 15. And you're just slowly whittling it off.
Well, there's a lot of good things that we're doing now. I think you sort of take credit for something. There's a lot of good things that we're doing now, such as inspecting these practices every three years. Some of the nurseries out there recycle their water. So what drains off their site from a rain, which is going to carry the fertilizer they apply to ponds, they then pump that for irrigation. So that's sort of a nutrient recycling system that, you know, the state doesn't know we're doing it unless we report it.
So you're saying that the county gets a benefit from a private company following best management practices?
In a way, yeah. Yeah, if it's not, if it's not being, if it's not taking credit for now. If it was part of a, so to build a Walmart, you need a series of ponds or, you know, best management practices to deal with stormwater. That is, you know, in a set of plans, the state knows they are there now.
Right.
In the case of they're doing a, they're going above and beyond somehow in dealing with their stormwater that we're not aware of. In the case of nurseries, that's a common one, that if they collect the water that drains on their site and then they use that for irrigation, that is a credit that we can take credit for.
We can.
Yes.
Do they get, does that business get some type of a write-off for that?
Right now, no.
Not from the county, but maybe from the state.
In the larger municipalities that have implemented a stormwater utility, AKA rain tax, they will give credit on what they're billed for doing practices. So if they maintain their BMP, if they have a lot of green space or they planted trees, they can get a reduction in their bill for that. We don't have any mechanism like that at the moment. But like Dallas was mentioning, with our roadside ditches, that is impervious surface that we're saying is naturally treated. Where we're going to need to focus is, yeah, the higher impervious areas or the older developments that don't have stormwater. It would benefit us to do something.
And there's a cost benefit to themselves as well. When they go in and do these water recycling programs, they're able to significantly downsize some of their stormwater projects, which saves them money. All of these projects, when they come in, if you plopped a Super Walmart out in Parsonsburg, for instance, they'd have to build stormwater management ponds. So we would be able to claim credit for that stormwater management pond for that new construction. So they have to do that per the regulations. Now, if they go in and do some type of water recycling program, they can shrink that footprint so they save themselves money as well by doing these more advanced features. Let me move forward for a sec real quick to talk about, because a lot of the topics that we're hitting are covered in some of these other slides. So we've talked about this impervious area work plan. I want to go onto that second bullet we first looked at, which is the minimum control measures. These are items that include public education and outreach, public involvement participation, malicious discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff, post-construction stormwater management and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Some of the items covered under all, under these six items are, I've highlighted. So for instance, the education and outreach, websites, employee training, brochures. Under public involvement and participation, there's adopt-a-stream programs, storm drain sensing. If you've seen on the top of the storm drain where it says, the bay starts here. I think Salisbury has some little sticker that they put on top of their inlets to remind people, hey, don't dump. We have to go out into the field and look at our storm drain outfalls to see, okay, if we've had a significant drought and no water really should be coming out of a storm drain and we go out and look, and oh, there's a steady flow here, that's an indication that somebody tied something in beyond just storm drain that we can investigate and take off of, out of our system. By telling them, look, you got to tie this, take the connection off the storm drain, put it into the sewer. The construction site stormwater controls is already handled through the Wycomico County Soil Conservation District. The post-construction stormwater management, where we review our stormwater plans. We do post-construction inspections with the inspector that Wes was talking about. And then just routine maintenance. These are all items that we're already taking care of. The pollution, pollution, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So operation and maintenance, that's where, this is where the street sweeping falls into. Maintain the stormwater pollution prevention plan. There's three entities within the county that have to have these stormwater pollution prevention plans. It's the landfill, roads and the airport. And what this basically says is, if you've got big drums of oil or degreaser or something like that, you've got to have some type of spill prevention so that if they tip over, it's not going to get into the storm drain and then make its way into the bay. And we've already got these pollution prevention plans in place for all three of these organizations. So it's, again, there's a lot of items in, specifically in these minimum control measures that the county is already undertaking that we can claim credit for.
And the work that we're doing right now, that you've been doing over this last year on stormwater management and the 35,000 that we put forth for the study, that all is, I guess, assuming credited towards this WIP program?
We can use it towards treating these. So for instance, let's take the Hunter's Mill stormwater pond. If we were to go in and enlarge that to handle more water. So now we're talking about flood reduction. When you look at that pond, there's no modern water quality treatments in that pond. So we make the pond deeper. But then we also, at the four bays, put in some treatments so that there are these little areas to reduce the sediment from just passing straight through or for treating nitrogen phosphorus reduction by putting in certain species. We can then claim, all right, we've made a reduction in how much stormwater flow goes down through Pratt Road. But we've also done it in such a way that we can claim credit for treating the impervious area that is coming to that pond. So, yeah, there's.
So this is more about being environmentally friendly than it is developing an infrastructure, a safe infrastructure?
Correct. There don't tend to be permits keeping us from flooding one another. It's more trying to keep the water that leaves a site or the county from being polluted and affecting others.
But the good thing is, there's a lot of money out there for projects that treat impervious area that wasn't previously treated. So if we can find money for that and then just find a way to also get flood reduction out of as well, we can look for ways to merge the two.
I've got a question.
Yes.
It was announced on TV that they were going to reduce the size of parking lots that new businesses were going to have.
The city.
City. Is that something you see the county doing? Or are we involved in that, any of the planning zoning portion of it? How does that all work into the county's plan or whatever? Does it, does that have anything to do with it? I guess that's a good question.
Yeah, I'll say, as far as I know, we haven't looked into that like the city has. It will help the city in some ways, you know, development. In some cases, a developer and having reviewed plans, they'll complain that, they'll say, look, I'm going to have no more than four cars yet. Your code is requiring me to have 15 spaces. So that'll, that'll help in a lot of ways because there won't be as much parking lot impervious surface on that. That is something we can, we can look into as well. But with what the city's doing, that won't have any direct impact on what we're required to do or our goals set by the state.
Is anyone doing the pervious parking lots or driveways?
Some places are.
PRMC has one.
Yeah, exactly. They require a little more maintenance. You've got to go throw in vacuum, clean the.
They can clog up otherwise.
The porous areas. They're a little more maintenance intensive.
I think there was a big push for that a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it comes down to the cost. Sometimes it's cheaper to take a part of the property and dig it out for a pond or a buyer retention than to put in permeable pavers and all of that.
I got you.
And then the last of those three initial bullets was the evaluation assessment, record-keeping, reporting. We'll have an annual report that's going to be due, the 31st of every year. In that first year, we have to provide, again, our impervious area baseline analysis, telling them how much we're saying our impervious area is that we have to treat in the county. MDE will look over it and either agree or provide comments. Providing a restoration work plan, how we think we're going to meet those goals of treating that 20% of that impervious area. Providing an activity schedule for when we think these items will occur. We have to develop a database. This is actually, because of the GIS technology and what ESRGC is doing, the BMP database is actually being developed at the same time that we're developing our baseline analysis. They've, they'll be able to show you a picture on the screen of where all the impervious areas are, where all the stormwater management ponds are. And then MDE simply wants that visual representation in a tabular format and that's all can just be extrapolated out of what ESRGC is doing for us. And then lastly, we have to report on the progress of the minimum control measures. They want to know how, you know, how many stormwater pipes we inspected, what activities we hosted, there's certain, that's where you kind of get into the specifics of the numbers of what's been done. So they want to see. what's been done. So they want to see, um, I, I believe it's two public events per year. So we have to look at, okay, what, what public events have we already had that we can take credit for? Or how many stormwaters, how many stormwater inspections have we done? Again, it's things that we've already done that we just have to basically count up, report, and provide documentation on. And, uh, lastly, developing a budget. Again, um, ESRGC was awarded, uh, last year, uh, the, the contract to develop our, our baseline, that was, uh, $68,000. Um, when we get new plans in, we're just gonna keep feeding them to them, and they're gonna keep this, this model updated for us. That's about 5,000 a year. Um, talking with the city about what costs they've been experiencing, um, for developing a compliance strategy. Um, they had about a $30,000 price tag. That was just a, a, a one-time fee. And then for their illicit discharge detection program, uh, it was about 15,000 to set that up. And then they have, uh, a separate, uh, separate, uh, engineering company come in and, and do the surveys, and get out there, and, and provide the inspections and annual reports, and that's about 35,000. Um, right now, i- in this year's budget, we have 100,000 that was included. Um, and, and I, I think we're on good track to be able to use that money for the MS4. Um, and we'll certainly be revisiting our budget over the coming years as, as we get more involved with, uh, with what needs to be done.
It was one year, I believe, um, we were, we were putting 200,000 in, wasn't it?
That, that's for the, um, the Chesapeake Bay WIP.
Okay.
Uh, we've been putting.
I'm getting that mixed up.
Yeah, so, so this is the regulatory hammer. If we don't, if, if we're not showing that we're doing adequate bay cleanup efforts, and we're not reviewing development plans as, as, uh, we're supposed to, or we're not inspecting BMPs, this is how they come at us with, with, um, fines and administrative orders.
It says that the county included 100,000.
Yeah, so what, what we've got is, we've got 200,000 a year going towards the WIP projects that we then use typically as matching for, for grants that we've applied to go in and put these BMPs, these stormwater ponds, or these bio retention areas actually out there. This 100,000 would go toward, that, that has been budgeted, would go towards keeping our ba- our, our, our baseline mapping, our BMP database up to date about developing the co- the compliance strategy, and then also developing our illicit discharge detection and elimination program. It, it's for the, the other side of actual, in the field construction projects. It's for more of the, the, the regulatory administration that, that MDE
The tracking and paperwork.
Because while we can do an, a, a, a WIP project that gives us MS4 credit, there are certain things that are exclusive to MS4 that's not gonna meet our WIP goals. WIP doesn't care if we have an updated stormwater pollution prevention plan. WIP cares that we've built a pond that's going to treat a parking lot that wasn't being treated before. So that's where there's, there's, so there's two separate pots of money, because there's, while there is a lot of overlap, there are things that do not overlap, and we need to make sure that we're using the money for what it was intended for.
Education and outreach, you can't get WIP credits for, but you do get credit in the MS4 for talking to people and educating them about, don't put leaves out in, in your drain or in your ditch. Um, don't dump chemicals in certain areas, so.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon?
Who was that?
Yeah, could I, could I just offer just a couple thoughts on this? I've been following, uh, this particular permit, and I've gotten involved across the bay with a couple of just marginal situations that involve this type of permit. Um, but I think that the, the dollar amounts that have been suggested today need some scrutiny. I mean, and I mean that going forward. I understand it's hard to come up with a dollar amount before we have our baseline and have gone through our plan and whatnot, but the 10 Western Shore counties are now figuring something in the range of $2 billion total.
But again, that's the difference between a phase two.
I, I understand. I understand that there are differences, both in size and amount of work, but they have a 20% remediation requirement, and that's what, that's the big banana. That's why that $2 billion is there. It's not the other stuff.
Yeah, but when, when you're talking about an area that's got 100,000 acres of impervious area versus someplace that's got, say, 5,000 acres, it's, that's where the cost.
I understand we can't come up with an amount, but I'm just suggesting you take 1% of $2 billion. It's a lot of money. I don't know how much we can cut it down. That's, that's for the future. But, uh, in fact, I think when we turned in our notice of intent, we had to give an estimated amount, didn't we? On it, we didn't give an estimate?
There, there's a big difference between a phase one and a phase two.
But anyway.
And the numbers are based on phase ones.
Yeah.
Because we're not Baltimore County, we're not Montgomery County.
I've looked through the phase two permit, and there are some things that, that the council, I think, will have to be involved in, other than what we've been talking about here. One is the requirement to adopt an MDE-approved stormwater management ordinance that provides plan review and approval processes.
Which we already do and.
I understand, I understand. We passed one several years ago, per state regulations. But these are new state regulations, and one of the things that has to be provided now is inspection and enforcement procedures.
Which we do.
I know the city of Salisbury has just revised theirs, based on the fact they're under the MS4 permit, too.
They, they got DMPs. They did not have a stormwater inspector, like the county does.
The other, the other thing is that to adopt an ordinance that prohibits illicit discharges, I don't know if we have that yet or not. And another thing is to establish and document legal means for gaining access to private property to investigate and eliminate illicit discharges. So there are some things that are gonna have to come before council that's under the MS4 permit that we've now given a notice of intent on. Um, I think another issue is, how do we want to address all these plans? Do we want them to come before council for review, before they're submitted? Uh, I think this is something that maybe we possibly need another work session on.
Well, Mr. Taylor, would this not be a directive that the executive branch will have to initiate?
Well, certainly, yeah. But what I'm saying is, before they're submitted to the state, should they come before council for review and/or approval? I mean, it's something I think that you want to get hammered out, so there's no question about that. Uh, there is just another thing that's somewhat related to this, new state legislation that requires a nuisance flooding plan. And I've talked to Dallas briefly about it, but that's another item that I think probably should, should come before council, before it's submitted to MDE. Um, and we can talk about that at a work session. But I thi- I think it might be wise to have a general planning-type work session on this.
All right.
Thank you, Mr.
First of the year, something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any else, John?
Yeah, any other questions?
That's it?
Great, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work. Next item on the agenda is the status of the Waukama County Nursing Home. Uh, I don't see Mr. Strausberg here. Okay, so this item is not going to be until 1 o'clock. We're taking a, probably a 45-minute recess.
Sounds good.
I hate to tell you that. President Shawnee, I'm sure that's why you're here, maybe? You can join us for lunch if you'd like.
I hate to break away, but I'll make a motion.
Entertaining motion for recess?
Seven minutes.
We'll reconvene at, uh, 1 o'clock.